I'm going to call to order the City Council regular meeting. It is now 6:20. We apologize for the delay, but we didn't finish with our special session until 6 o'clock. So if you all can join me, stand and say the prolegial allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Haskew here.
Councilmember Silva here.
Councilmember Wilk here.
Mayor Proton Waddell here.
And Mayor Carlsen here.
We're now at item number 1C, which is Anne Meredith's oath of office. Is...there you are. You're hiding behind the podium. I was worried for a minute.
(inaudible)
Anne Meredith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge of the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you very much. Well, I'd just like to thank the Council for giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to working with you and the Commission and staff on keeping Walnut Creek as the leader in the art community. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Anne. We look forward to working with you. You're fully qualified, and we're excited that you're our newest Art Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move to proclamation. I have two proclamations for the same organization, but different branches of it. So, if I can ask Sally Holcomb and Annie Luks, is she?
An-Lux. An-Lux Chapter.
Oh, An-Lux Chapter. Okay. Well, Sally, if you can come up. And then Jody from the Mount Diablo Chapter. And these are chapters of the Daughters of the American Revolution, which is an outstanding organization. I'm going to read this because we don't have a particularly long agenda tonight, so I figure we'll go ahead and read the whole thing.
Thank you.
The proclamation says exactly the same for each of them. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law; and whereas September 17, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention; and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document as memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it; and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week; now therefore I, Richard G. Carlsen, Mayor of the City of Walnut Creek, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitutional Week in the City of Walnut Creek, and encourage its citizens to reaffirm the principles that the men who signed the Constitution on September 17, 1787, established in the Constitution, and to vigilantly protect the freedoms guaranteed under the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. So, first, Sally?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, Sally is with the Anne Luks...
Luks.
Luks Chapter. Everybody who knows me and has watched these things knows that I'm not good with names, so I apologize for that. And then, we have one also for Jody Noack, but I need to...
Correct.
You're the Mount Diablo Chapter.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if you would like to say a few comments.
First of all, I want to thank the City Council for awarding this proclamation and supporting the U.S. Constitution, and I encourage everyone to read it. So, thank you.
Short. Thank you, Mayor Carlsen and the City Council, for this proclamation. The Constitution Week was actually proposed by a President General of the Daughters of the American Revolution to President Eisenhower, who...and the DAR passed a resolution to the Congress, and the Congress enacted it in 1956. So, this is an opportunity for us to remind our citizenry of the importance of our most precious document. Thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you.
The next item we'll take up is the presentation on the Quarterly Blueprint for Success.
I will do my best, despite this short meeting, to not read the entire Blueprint for Success to you all, since I trust you've read it in full already. Okay, so, my name is Jessica Cole. I'm the Development Services Innovation Lead for the city, and I'm here to deliver the quarterly update on the Development Services Blueprint for Success that we've been working through for about nine months now. So, as a quick refresher from last time, we left off talking about how we were looking at every stage of the process for every size of organization that actually comes to our counter. So, from everybody who is an individual homeowner, who might be coming to just get one permit every now and again, to our neighborhood businesses, who are looking for permits to grow or to change spaces, all the way to the Walnut Creek-defining projects that are large-scale developments that are working with us for months or years at a time. We also talked about how we're improving our use of metrics. And in particular, I wanted to bring you up to date on where we're at in the blueprint implementation. So, as of today, we've implemented about, or have live, about 60% of the different initiatives across the blueprint as a whole. And if I'm in your shoes, the first question I'm going to ask is, 60% is great, why only 60%? What's up with the other 40%? And that's what we're here to talk about today. So, the theme of today is actually high-hanging fruit. All of you are probably familiar with the term low-hanging fruit. It's the stuff that's easy to knock off, that makes sense, that are fairly straightforward. It takes attention, it takes diligence, it's not that they're easy, but we kind of know how to solve them, we know how to get them done. We've done that. We've gone live with 60% of this blueprint. The other 40% are high-hanging fruit, things that we know are problems, but we don't necessarily have a clear solution for quite yet. We need to do some deep thinking about it, and in some cases, it's not just us. These might be problems that no other organization has really perfected yet, and we're trying to be a leader in the field. So, I'll give you examples of three of those pieces of high-hanging fruit that we're thinking about right now over the course of today. One is, how do we foster real two-way communications with our applicants and with our community? The second is, how do we expedite the process for affordable housing? And the third is, how do we build and reinforce our culture, a culture of improvement, a culture of growth, based on the feedback that we're getting? So, the first question, how do we foster two-way communication? I think typically, people might envision that government exists exactly the way that I'm standing now, which is at a microphone, speaking outwards, with little opportunity for dialogue. That's not how we want to be, that's not what Walnut Creek believes in, and what we're doing as a service to our community. So, the question is, how do we actually make the community feel that way? How do we open up this dialogue? Well, we are about a year into the biggest of our efforts on that front, which is the Development Services Forum. So, we've hosted nine of these forums so far. In fact, we're having the 10th one tomorrow morning at 7:30 to 9:00 with PG&E. And we host these just about every month, every...the 3rd Wednesday, 7:30 to 9:00. They're open to the public. And it was a huge thrust when we first decided to get these going, because what it meant was that the city was putting on programming for the public on a monthly basis, and inviting outside agencies, as well as specific members of the development community, to come in and engage with us. When we first started, the community gave us a checklist of people that they'd like to see at these forums, when we asked who it was important that we invite. So far, we have actually tackled every single one of those major suggestions that we received, and that includes outside agencies such as Central San, East Bay Mud, Contra Costa Water District, Contra Costa Fire, PG&E coming tomorrow, as well as some case studies on housing with Habitat for Humanity East Bay. And in particular, a number of updates from staff members, ranging from what new technology do we have available, to our most recent forum, which was on afterthoughts that people might think about late in the project, but if they put as forethoughts, they might actually be able to save quite a bit of time and energy. In addition, we've had sessions that are devoted specifically to journey mapping and getting feedback from the people who are in the room about what they think about the process. While we've been doing this, we've actually started to think about the longevity of these forums. How do we make sure it's reaching not just the people who are able to be free from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m., the 3rd Wednesday of every month, but instead, people who want to watch this content maybe later in the week, or maybe several months from now, when they are starting their project, and they are waking up and saying, "Oh, I have to contact PG&E. I wonder if anyone has any tips on what they're looking for in their application process." So, we've been recording the last few forums. They go up on YouTube, on our city channel, and that's something that is accessible from here onwards. It's also a great staff development tool, because in addition to our audience that we're talking to, who are members of the public, we also have members of staff who don't necessarily get exposed to this content on a regular basis. As far as outcomes go, here are a few numbers for you. So, we've had at least 55 individual attendees of the forum who are not staff, and who are not the people who are speaking. I say at least 55, because the first couple, we didn't have a full sign-in sheet that we could officially check off. We know there are some people who sneak in for a donut and sneak out again before we count them, but we can confirm that we have at least 55. We also have, as of about a few hours ago, when I last checked, over 150 views of our forum videos up on the website. So, as you can see, it's a multiplier effect to have those available. And then, we also...we have, out of this, out of the agencies who have come, at least a few agencies who have been inspired by our work. And I can say that because I attended Central Sanitary District Sewer Summit a few weeks ago. And one of the things that they said there was that they invited Contra Costa Health to come speak at their sewer sublette. And they pulled me aside afterwards, and they said, "We did this because we were inspired by the work of the Walnut Creek Development Forum, and we saw that you were bringing outside agencies in, how productive it could be to start getting agencies to collaborate and to talk to each other, and that's what inspired us to move forward with it." So, it's kind of kick-starting this conversation across the board. Our work here is not done, and the two-way conversations are not limited to the forum. So, a few things that we're thinking about, what will the future of the forum look like after a year? We're planning to... ...response spend so far, what do they want to see? Should we move to quarterly meetings? Should we, in fact, do more small-table discussions? So, we'll open it up to see what their feedback is. We also anticipate that we'll tackle some of the issues that they've been raising beyond just information sharing. Something we're thinking about is hosting a forum for the outside agencies, so that we all get in one room, without necessarily it being about information sharing out to the public, but instead saying, "How can we collaborate?" For example, if we're all moving to digital plan check, and we know this, are there ways that we can proactively work with each other, so that when we get there, we're all using the same format, we're asking for the same data, we're giving people's checklists that overlap instead of conflict with each other? We're also thinking about further digital services. So, again, what will it look like when we deliver some of this information online? So, in addition to seeing it on YouTube, people can come to our website and actually get their questions answered, and feel like it's interactive and responsive to who they are. And finally, there's the everyday accessibility of staff. So, we talked about the project status meetings that we're trying to host for bigger projects as they come through the pipeline. We've been doing proactive meetings, particularly on the economic development side, with people who are interested in reaching out to our community and getting involved in Walnut Creek, and we'll continue those efforts over time. Next, a question that I know is near and dear to this Council's heart, which is, how do we expedite the affordable housing process? And I don't need to tell you this, but for those who may not be familiar, this is a major City Council priority for the year, in addition to, I could say, a community priority, a regional priority, a state priority, and something that we're trying to figure out So, when we started thinking about how we can help with expediting that process, that is...this is territory that's relatively new. So, we went back to what we had heard from the public, from our applicants, when we did the journey mapping process with them, and we heard from applicants and staff, where is it that you spend a lot of time? And where can you not predict what's happening next? And maybe we can start at those pressure points when we look to clear up the process. So, we got our Development Services team into a room, along with our counter task force representatives, and one of the neat things about this was that it actually built on the work that we've been doing. We could not have tackled this if we hadn't spent months doing journey mapping and putting together these teams, so that we could get them in the room with a certain amount of trust and back-and-forth, to start brainstorming, what could we do at every stage, what could each division contribute? So, here's what we're testing, and right now, we're actually actively testing this with two projects that are in the pipeline. Once we see how it goes, we're going to see if we want to...what we want to solidify into a formal process. So, the first thing is a front-of-the-line pass. So, the head of every division has actually agreed that we can make these projects have priority. We don't anticipate there being so many of them that it overwhelms the existing projects, and we'll keep an eye on that. But we can actually put them towards the front of the line, and what this means in particular is, when you get down to the nitty-gritty, things like building plan review, we'll save a week at every step of that review. So, every time you go back through that cycle, you'll save about a week. We're also working towards joint commission meetings, which is something that the commissions themselves told us they'd be open to. We're also thinking about continuous project teams. So, making sure that there's someone with their eye on this project all the way through, that it does feel continuous, that we're having meetings at every stage. And when, if anyone's ever out of the office, whether for training, or because they're sick, we have somebody else who's backup, so that we don't even miss a beat when that happens. Finally, we're working proactively with the developers to ask them, "What is your schedule? Where do you want to be? What's your target date?" And then, brainstorming with them, because as much as it is about us, it's also about their schedule and what the outside agencies can do. So, some of it is strategy. What's important about this, too, is we expect this to trickle down. While this is for affordable housing projects in particular, it's also going to be something that, over time, if we make these improvements, and we look at them, and we say, "This one's common sense. Maybe we should make this available to any project," or to any project deemed a priority for any reason. So, that's something that we have in the back of our mind. We'll test it here, and then we'll see what we learn. Finally, we're thinking about how we build a culture of continuous improvement. And I'll...this is something that may be memorable to you from the last time that we were here. We were looking at metrics for how we were doing, and something that really stuck out when we broke down the data, was that when people are first submitting their applications for entitlements, that first 30-day period where we tell them whether or not their application is complete, not whether or not it's approved, but just whether or not it's complete and can move on, we only had 18% of total applications marked complete within those first 30 days last year. We thought we could do better. And so, this was actually our first SMART goal that we set as a team. So, the Community and Economic Development Department embraced this, and everybody decided to set a goal of actually getting to 25%. So, pretty significant uptick, particularly considering that we set it halfway through the year. So, we set this goal in June. So, if you were to walk upstairs right now, you would see on our wall that we have Mount Diablo. Mount Diablo is marked with particular benchmarks along the way, and we actually celebrate every time that we do a complete letter. And we have a hiker who climbs up. The other thing that's nice about this, in addition to reminding us every time that we walk in, and giving us a smile, exactly like that, it's kitschy, but it works, is that we have all of our faces on backpacks. And in addition to the group goal, every individual person set their own goal for, "How can I contribute to making this goal come about?" And when they do it, they put their face and their backpack on the mountain. So, this has actually mobilized the group and led to some unexpected innovation. One that I'll give you an example of is, at the counter right now, this looks like it's your everyday counter, except for one new detail, and that's hanging right there. And what those are, are actually little tickets that we give to people now when they come in and they're waiting. And the reason that we do this is because we had one of our inspectors who said, "I don't really know anything about 30-day letters, but I do know that I work with people at the counter, and something that I see is that they wait..." Sometimes, they feel like they're waiting a long time, or they're confused about who they need to talk to, because all they do is write their name, and then someone walks out and says, "Anyone here for planning? Anyone here for building?" And we do the best we can, but it can feel sometimes like maybe you're being overlooked. So, he actually worked with a team to come up with a system now, where we give people numbers for the different divisions that they need to see. And when you walk out now as a staff member, all you have to do is glance, say, "Okay, I know I have three people in my line." You work through them. It makes us more responsive, it makes us friendlier, it makes us quicker to actually get to people. And it may seem like a little thing, but this is an example of how, when you have a department full of people, and their contributions stack up, it slowly becomes a different kind of culture. Another couple of things that we're working on, so check-ins on those individual SMART goals. We're actually doing a training later this fall on how to have difficult conversations. So, what is it to de-escalate a challenging situation? When we receive feedback, because we do receive feedback, and we don't always get it right, then we want to respond in an appropriate way, and something that we're starting to do is retrospectives. So, we hear that, we get the team together who is involved, we get in a room, and we say, "Okay, let's put everything that happened out on the table. What would we do differently if we were in this place next time?" Finally, we're actually molding ourselves into a shared identity and branding. So, we are the Development Services Team. We are embracing that. You'll see that the Development Services Permit Center is going to be rebranded, both on the website, as well as in person, as you move upstairs. Finally, just to return to that original metric, I'm excited to tell you that this time last year, we were at about 14...no, sorry, we were about...at about 12 individual letters that had been sent out. Today, we are at 18. So, at the same time, we're already markedly better, and we have already, as of this week, hit our total that we hit for all of 2016, when it comes to those 30-day completeness letters. So, we still have a ways to go to get to our goal of 25, but we are seeing a difference from the efforts that we're putting forth. Finally, what can you can expect to see from us next time? We're thinking about where we can improve from a technological perspective. That's something that you really have to get the people right before you move into the technology, but we're just about ready to get there. And we're also thinking about what our pieces will be when it comes to working with these outside agencies. Again, we have to get ourselves right and figure out our approach before we reach out, but that's something that we're now starting to work on. Finally, I'll close and open for questions, just acknowledging that, for us, this is an ongoing process. We're not always going to get it right. Outside agencies are not always going to get it right. People who are at the counter are not always going to bring the right things. States will sometimes get involved and tell us that we need to change up what we're doing. So, what's most important is actually having what one of my favorite researchers, Carol Dweck, will say is a growth mindset. A mindset where we believe that if we are listening to feedback, and we're adjusting to the feedback that we're getting, then we can continuously grow the culture, grow what we're doing, and get better and better over time.
Thank you very much. Why don't we open it up for questions and comments?
I'm going to start, because the mayor and I were on an ad hoc committee, as you know, that was charged with finding a way to move our planning and building and inspection and the development department past what was a pretty difficult situation, with a lot of bad feedback coming in on all levels. I'm sitting here, and I could feel my mouth go like this until it hit total, and then I wanted to pull my ears in, too. I was so happy. I was especially excited about the fact that you've got much of what people were complaining about with just within this time, setting the goals for the 30-day letters, trying to develop ways to communicate. You had done so much, and yet, I could tell when we got the letter, the city manager's letter, that this new system solved a problem that I'm sure has been made everybody, their jobs, much more easy, because if you feel like you're the passed-over person, you're going to start that conversation with the person who finally serves you with a chip on your shoulder. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, what you said was so apt." You are...you, the whole team, Sandy, Heather, everybody who's involved in this, has made a significant go-forward, meet the demands of the job improvement, and then figure out how to improve it better. I'm pleased that you're trying to be the leaders. I'm going to...I'm going to set your standard for the entire state. So, thank you very much for all you've accomplished, all of you. I feel like a proud mama.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a comment? Go ahead, Cindy.
So, thank you very much, and thank you to all of staff. I know this was...it's a difficult undertaking, and you're right, there's low-hanging fruit, and then there's...I've quite heard it phrased as high-hanging fruit. That's what you get a cherry picker for. And you need to talk to the lady from Public Works, because they have... But what's very important to the community, whether it's a homeowner that's trying to do remodel a bathroom, or a major developer like Mace Rich that wants to invest a quarter of a billion dollars in Walnut Creek, is speed of processing of what is inevitably a complicated and painful process. So, when we handle it with grace and a respect for what they're going through, and how much money it really is costing them to get through the process, I think we have come eons in the last two years, and I look forward to Heather rolling out a cherry picker with Rich Payne's help to help you get that high-hanging fruit.
Kevin?
I just want to say thanks. This is a...it's a great improvement from what I've heard about, so I wasn't on the Council for a lot of this, but it's great to see these kind of thoughts going into what we can do to make it easier for everybody in the public. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Let me just say a couple of comments. Obviously, like Lueella, I am absolutely...well, I would say tickled pink, but that's an old phrase. I'm very...showing my age a little bit. I'm very proud of what the department has done and what the city's done. When this first started and started rolling out, it was a challenge for everybody, but I think our staff and our leadership has been spectacular in so many ways. The results may not sound like they're very impressive to people who aren't involved with the process, but they are. And I want to add a couple of other comments. I have spoken to different developers and different property owners who have done things with property, such as the Contra Costa...oh, the art school. I've forgotten the name off the top. School of Performing Arts. They had a serious challenge to get their school opened, and our staff worked with them, and their school opened on time. And that was something that I was very proud to see, and I have heard repeated compliments to members of our staff, because I consistently ask if things are improved. And all the developers that complained to me previously have said that it has improved, and some have said they have no problems with the process. And I applaud the entire organization for the terrific job they've done. I know Heather and Sandy have been very instrumental, and I know you've been very instrumental as well. And I can't...I can't tell you any more than extremely pleased and happy, just like I think other members of the Council are. And thank you so much for your report.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the input.
Okay, we're going to take item number three out, because we really have the consent count...move it up, because we really have only consent calendar items. So, let me call for public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer them to staff. If you have a public comment, now's the time to come forward. Please fill out a speaker card and hand it to Susie, our clerk. And if you could please identify yourself.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, I'm Ralph Hoffman. Back... Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, I'm Ralph Hoffman, backed by popular demand. I've been asked to sing an encore to my musical public comment of a past city council meeting. Feel free to sing along if you'd like. The name of the song is "Donald Trump." It's to the tune of Shirley Brown by The Coasters. Fee, fee, fi, fi, fo, fo, fum. I smell danger to the Constitution. That Donald Trump, what a chump. That Donald Trump, what a chump. He's gonna get caught, just you wait and see. Why's everybody always marching against me? Always bragging big time, we know that's him. When it's storming cats and dogs, he says the sun's shining in. That's Donald Trump, what a chump. That's Donald Trump, what a chump. He's gonna get caught, just you wait and see. Why's everybody always picking on me? Whose healthcare law doesn't rate? Who's always pandering the hate? Who's gonna have a water gate? Who, me? Yeah, you. Walks in the White House, fat and slow, he's got the Russian mafias, man, oh, don't you know? That's Donald Trump, what a chump. That's Donald Trump, what a chump. He's gonna get caught, just you wait and see. Oh, why's everybody always picking on me? Thank you.
You know, somebody gave me some money to buy some food the other day. I bought some clothes, because those are hard to come by right now. Those were taken, I don't know, they get taken all the time. I have to make a point here, because I've had a very difficult time with PG&E. I've had a very difficult time with the law firm representing PG&E. I had a very difficult time collecting my funds, and I've had a very painful, long-running experience. I've managed to trace all the way back to Santa Barbara Island in Florida, where that just got hit by the hurricane, to my connections to Porter Gosse, which is an unusual thing. He's the CIA director. And then linked to that is another thing. You talk about Constitution Week, and one of the things, I'm just gonna quickly read this, so you understand how deep my story goes. John Carver, from 1584 to 1621, Carver was a passenger on the Mayflower. He was a leader during the Mayflower Voyage. He signed the Mayflower Compact, and he was also the first governor of Plymouth. It is believed that Carver was from Doncaster in Yorkshire, England. Carver is a separatist that did not believe in the teaching of the Church of England. I could go on, that's a well-known story. My name is Peter Carver Bennett. That's my namesake. I had all the family antiques all gone. I have had china that matches what's in the De Young Museum. That's why I'm upset with you. The two best assets in my life have been gone for six years. So I'm gonna leave these, because I think some people need to mull over some of the experience. I know that things have changed. This picture is very important, and I'll send you an email to detail what, how many millions this guy cost me, and how I lost million dollars in contracts, and I just, later I discovered they're connected. This is our favorite district attorney with his five friends. Every one of those people on that page I know personally for years. And my family, copy of the lawsuit, I lost $500,000 here in Walnut, partly from Walnut Creek. If you don't believe I know people, there's a picture of Robert Vesco. I live just about two miles from his house, and my brothers used to deliver liquor to his house. Trust me, I know the guy. That's Clinton's pardon. And this one here is very important. I'd like you to get your heads around this, because what's on that pipeline safety report connects to the fatality here. And I'm out of time, but I do appreciate the fact that I was able to buy some new clothes. And if you don't mind, I'll pick these up tomorrow, scan them and put them online. I need to set a stone, a stick in the sand for Contra Costa times, and I'll explain later what's going on with that.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll get these tomorrow.
So any other public comment? Not seen any. I will now officially close public comment, and we'll move to the consent calendar, item number two. Does anybody wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Do we have a vote, please?
Mayor Proton Waddell.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilt.
Aye.
And Mayor Carlson.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Move to item number four, council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests, any closed session announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council during the closed session of the September 5th meeting unanimously approved the terms of a proposed settlement in the matter of Nona Brown versus City of Walnut Creek. The case involved a trip and fall incident here in the city. Pursuant to the terms of the settlement, which has now been finalized, the city has agreed to pay the plaintiff $35,000 in exchange for a full release of all claims, and the insurance company for the property owners agreed to pay the plaintiff $150,000. Also, on September 5th, 2017, in closed session, the city council unanimously approved the terms of a proposed settlement in the matter of Feffinger versus City of Walnut Creek. This case involved a bicycle accident on Oak Grove Road near Ignacio Valley Road. The settlement requires no payment from the city, and pursuant to the terms of the settlement, one of the co-defendant insurance carriers has agreed to pay $6 million in exchange for a full release of all claims. As the council will recall, there was a serious injury involved in that. With that, Mr. Mayor, we have no further announcements.
Thank you, Steve. City manager report.
Brief update. As many of you are aware, last Friday was the end of the legislative session in Sacramento. It was the end of the first year of a two-year session. We will have our lobbyists here in, I don't know, a month or two to give a full update, but I thought I'd mention a few items that are of note as they directly relate to the council's priorities and also to the legislative platform. The first is what was essentially five different bills that made their way through the legislature that are being termed the housing package. The most notable are SB 2, which will add a fee to the recordation of documents related to real estate transactions, expected to generate a couple hundred million dollars a year that will go towards affordable housing. Second bill of note would authorize a bond that could go before the voters, I believe, in 2018, which is in the neighborhood of $4 billion that would be used for affordable housing as well. And then the other one that is of significant note is SB 35, which is essentially Housing by Right Revisited. It wasn't called that this time, but essentially allows for less discretion at the local level for certain projects that meet certain criteria. All of those bills are pending approval by the governor. There is also another bill that Walnut Creek, the city opposed, as well as most cities in California, which is SB 649, which is related to small cell sites, which would essentially strip municipalities from having any type of input over location with respect to cell sites. And there was actually, at the League Conference last week, probably 100 different cities that were on the Capitol steps to voice opposition to this bill. Your council has sent its opposition on this bill in the past, and I would suggest, if we want to continue, that we continue to try to influence the governor in any way we can to get him to veto this bill and that, and continue on that front. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Dan. Now it's time for city council member reports on AB 1234 activities, council member assignments, various activities, and how many events. Kevin, we're gonna start with you. What a surprise.
Well, first of all, Mayor Carlson, as well as councilmembers Haskew and Silva, and I, we're up with our city manager up at Sacramento for the League of Cities Conference. Terrific to see all the different cities getting together, total nonpartisan, talking about issues that are really most important to us at the local level, and Dan mentioned some of them, and I'm sure that Cindy will talk a little bit more about that as well. But terrific to see that and see the participation there. In addition, Mayor Carlson, Cindy Silva and I were in the Walnut Festival and walking in the...
Parade.
In the parade, yeah, that's right, in the parade itself. And it actually is true, there are people that wave and applaud us while we walk down the street at times. So nice to see that that actually does happen.
They didn't read the sign.
But it was a terrific turnout, and kudos to the Walnut Festival organizers, the parade organizers. And lastly, the High Holidays and the Jewish New Year start tomorrow night, and I just want to wish Lashana Tovah to all of our Jewish residents, and may the year ahead be a good one.
Thank you, Kevin. Cindy?
Thank you very much. First of all, I'll thank our city manager for driving the vehicle that accompanied us in the parade that had the sign on it. Otherwise, no one really would have known who we were. No, they wouldn't have known who we were. So thank you, Dan. As liaison to Walnut Creek Downtown, I attended their board meeting a week ago. They had a couple of important discussions. One was the adoption of a strategic plan that looks out six, 12, 18, and 24 months. Some things to do with beautification, with events, with financials, et cetera. And in that regard, they are continuing to discuss the possibility of a property business improvement district, which is the structure that the Shadlands Business Park has, where the owners come together and decide to essentially tax themselves in order to be able to do improvements and other marketing activities that support the district. And at our next meeting on October 3rd, representatives of Walnut Creek Downtown will be here to give us an update on their plans for the potential of a, we'll say, a small public space at the corner of Cypress and Main. Speaking of small public spaces, thank you, Dan, for reminding us about SB 649, the not-so-small cell site technology. As it turns out, the automatic approvals that would go through would allow, some of the size of that equipment is the size of a refrigerator. So when the four of us were, or three of us were on the Capitol steps, oh, you weren't there, you had had to come home. So Luella and I were on the Capitol steps last Friday morning along with Dan, and I kept thinking, man, we should have gone to an appliance store and borrowed some boxes and really demonstrated how big that equipment could actually be, both on the street as well as up on our poles. Community Service Day is October 14th. Signups are well underway. If you haven't signed up yet, you are welcome to. We have activities in our parks, in our libraries, at our local schools, and you could even come help Luella sew at the Bedford Gallery some covers for the new visitor benches that are in Bedford Gallery. If you want to sign up or just check out the projects, visit www.walnut-creek.org/service. And finally, I will say, yes, I was also at the annual conference for the League of Cities last week, and there were two sessions that I thought were particularly interesting. One was on pension liability strategies. City manager and I were there together, and I think, I'm happy to report that the strategy of preference, it looks like, across the state is the Irrevocable Pension Trust, which we are moving forward with. So I'm glad we are doing that. Another session I went to was on updates on the implementation of SB 1, which is the Transportation Funding Bill that was adopted by the legislature in early April, and the funding that we will be receiving from that. And I look forward to seeing the list on the next meeting, so we can talk about what those items are and how much that really is going to impact our local roadways. And thank you very much, Steve Waymire and Scott Rickstrom, and Heather, your crew, on all of that for us.
Luella.
Thank you. I went to the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Planning Committee meeting, where we reviewed the environmental impact statement and the revisions to the county transportation plan, and the committee recommended that they move forward to be voted on by the full commission tomorrow night, where I will also be. We attended, Cindy and Kevin, and did we all go to the mayor's conference in, no? No, not Justin. Okay, so we went to the mayor's conference in Oakley, and that was very interesting. It was about the statistics that go behind some of the legislation and how our state policy is formed. Justin and I were meeting in, met at the Finance Committee this morning, and we reviewed our Parking Enterprise Fund, and we requested some deeper information as well as a review of the processes by which we administer it. We used to have a system that generated a lot more revenue. It was the old sensor system, so that the meters reset if people left with time left on their meter, so that the next person would have to be treated as a new person. And so we're trying to figure out how much we're going to not be able to accomplish all the wonderful things we were going to accomplish with that. Then we had a briefing, a small briefing on the review process, the process to get items, projects into the CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. It's all these silly letters. Anyhow, it's how we decide what is our next important projects, and Scott Wicksum did a really great job explaining the process and pointing out what we can and should do, and we discussed a little bit how we're going to spend some time looking at the most immediate, and that some big items are going to be, were postponed for discussion until the whole council can opine on it at our coming up council retreat.
I will only add on to what Ms. Haskew had to say for purposes of educating the community, and I don't know how much the council knows about this, but much like our general fund, we are now projecting a loss in our enterprise fund for parking. I know this is the first time that we put together a long-term financial plan for our enterprise fund, but it was surprising to me to see that we're actually gonna start losing money on that, considering how much we hear from the public that we're charging so much for parking, specifically, and I'm looking at our chief of police right now, how many tickets we write, the concept of that we're actually trying to make money on this. It's very clear, based off our long-term financial plan and anyone that could read a balance sheet, that that is not what is occurring here in Walnut Creek. Ms. Haskew and I worked through staff to discuss what we can do to alleviate this through policy and through shifting of funds, which will come back to us on the next meeting, along with some, developing some recommendations that will come to council shortly after our October subcommittee meeting.
I'm gonna be very brief, because this is, I guess I'm just about the last speaker before we're finished. I'm gonna give a shout-out for appreciation and a wonderful job that was done by Kevin and his staff on two items that were done in the last, or recently. One was Family Art Day, which was a fabulous program for a lot of kids. I saw a lot of parents, just an outstanding program, and the staff did a terrific job with that. And then the Senior Volunteer Luncheon was another terrific program with great music and a great opportunity. So Kevin, if you can convey my great appreciation to your staff, the respective ones that were involved, about what a terrific job they did. So with that, I'm simply gonna remind everybody that on the 28th of September, in the Shane Lyons Art Center, we're gonna have the staff art show, if you have an interest in looking at some good art that's been done by the staff. And those are all the announcements that I'm going to talk about. So the next item is, much to everybody's disappointment, adjournment. Meeting's adjourned.